Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Candidate Forum for Edina City Council. I'm Debbie McNeil, President of the League of Women Voters of Edina. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that encourages the informed and active participation by citizens in their government. While the League does studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support candidates or political parties. All of the positions expressed tonight will be those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. It's now my pleasure to introduce the moderator for tonight's forum, Judy Duffy, of the League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and thank you to all of you for being here this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to ask each of you, please, to turn off your cellphones, and appreciate you doing that. Thank you. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss issues that are important to you. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time we have. If your questions are not addressed tonight, feel free to contact the candidates directly. All candidates who filed for office and who will be on the November 6 ballot were invited to this forum. The rules and format of tonight's forum are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order. Speaking order will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and two minutes to answer a question that was sent out to them in advance. Candidates then will have one minute to answer each question submitted by members of the audience and one minute to make a closing statement. A League volunteer will time candidate responses and indicate to candidates when they have one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, and when they should stop. Audience questions must be in writing and handed to a volunteer who is wearing a League button stationed around the room here. The moderator will ask all questions. The League of Women Voters of Edina determines which questions will be asked and attempts, in good faith, to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted audience questions. All written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters of Edina. This forum is being videotaped, and I ask each of you to please hold your applause until the end of the forum. I would like to introduce to you your candidates for the City Council of Edina. Beginning to my left here is Ann Swenson, Mary Brindle, Chad Bell, and Wayne DeVorek. We will now begin with the opening remarks for each of the candidates, and by lot, Ann Swenson will go first.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and all the volunteers, and I'd like to thank all of our residents who are either here tonight and have chosen to come or will be watching us on television. I've been committed to Edina for decades, for I'm a graduate of Edina High School and I married an Edina High School graduate. I have two children who graduated from Edina, and I now have two grandchildren at Countryside. One of them, Jack, is sitting in the front row right now, listening to me. I volunteered in our community for years, in the schools. I've served two terms on the Edina Swim Club, the Blue Ribbon Committee at Edina, the Community Ed Board. I've been a member of CAPS, Community Action Partnership, for suburban Hennepin County, and I spent 10 years on the Planning Commission, and I've been your City Councilperson for the last two terms. I support a balance of strong city services and low taxes. I've worked hard to keep a well-managed city government, and I listen to all my residents. Thank you.
Mary Brindle.
Thank you. Thanks to the League, and thank you, everybody, for being here, and those watching, thanks for taking time to get involved. I moved to Edina in 1985. I married an Edina graduate, met him in college, and raised one son, who graduated in 2001. My volunteer service began with volunteering the schools as our son Luke was in the schools, and that just fueled my desire to keep it going and continue into community volunteering. I was elected to the council for the first time in 2008, and I thank you for that. It's been a great four years of learning and becoming more and more familiar with how the city runs, and I look forward to continuing that service to Edina with your help. Thanks.
Chad Bell.
Thanks to the League for having us here tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity, me specifically. So I am Chad Bell. I'm an Edina resident for the past seven years. This is actually my second term as a resident. I actually lived here from '96 to 2002 in my younger days, and moved away for a while, came back, got married. I have two children. My daughter Olivia is in second grade at Concord. My son Jackson's two years old. I'm running, I'm not on the council currently, I'm running because I have a true love for Edina, and I believe it has a bright future, and I want to help serve that. I have an extensive background in business, spending over 11 years at Best Buy, doing a lot of strategic planning, strategy work, business development, and overall general management and innovation. I spend my spare time with my kids. I'm also a volunteer coach for Special Olympics. Most of my athletes actually are from the Edina area. I'm a soccer coach, and I'm also a part of the Kids Club After School Parent Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne DeVorek.
Yeah, thank you for having us today. I've been a resident of Edina for 45 years. I had four children raised here, and I currently have two grandsons that go to school here in high school. And I retired four years ago, and my reason for running is I think I can help the city do a lot of other things, because I've been in construction all my life, building big homes and other things, and I feel that there's a lot of things at Edina we can do to keep taxes down and to make it more affordable for people moving into the city. I guess the whole crux of it is just to see if we can help the city go more forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to the question that the candidates were sent in advance, and the question is, municipalities sometimes look to public-private partnerships to make it possible to bring new fee-based amenities to the community. Using Edina examples, what are the benefits of such public-private partnerships, and what are the risks? Please be specific. Mary Brindle.
Thank you. The benefits of a public-private partnership, number one, is that the idea generally comes from the residents, and it's fueled by a sense of urgency, a desire for change, a desire for something that affects residents personally, and their commitment in it to make it a success. There are two examples that I can come up with. One is under construction right now, and that's the Hornets Nest, and it's really a great model of public-private partnership, commercial leases, a pro forma that just proves its success over time, and its sense of urgency was brought forward simply by the number of people it will serve, the revenue stream that it will create. The second fee-based amenity that I can think of is the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility in our city. It is a public-private partnership. It is a partnership between several cities and the Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport Commission, and it's fee-based in that all of the agencies that use it pay fees to use it, and therefore the revenue stream. The risks, as far as the training facility, low risk to Edina. Each of the cities came forward with an equal amount of value. Edina's value was the piece of property that the building sits on, so we really have no financial risk in that, other than the day-to-day maintenance of it, which is covered by user fees. As to the Hornets Nest, I do trust in the pro forma that we saw. It's an exciting project. It brings to our city a new source of revenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. DeVorek.
Yes, I see a couple of things that we've been doing, and the city has done. One was Utley Park, where they had a committee for veterans. They wanted to build a veterans memorial over there, and what they did is the city joined in and deed it off a piece of land to them, plus they gave them $30,000, and hopefully it'll keep moving along. I think they need $400,000 to make the thing a reality. The only other thing I see about it is I don't know who's going to maintain it. I never saw what the maintenance is going to be and who's going to maintain it if something happens to it. And the other thing is the Grandview Park over here, which is a park that even Our Lady of Grace and Jerry's and all those along that area, our fee owners, they pay in to maintain it, and it keeps the area very nicely done, and so I guess, all in all, it's a worthwhile thing for the city to do. The other thing is the Hornets Nest, which she had said about, it's going to be general sports and the velocity joining and paying some of the fees, plus the city will do it, and then the school will pay some fees for lockers and stuff like that. I think it'll be a worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Swenson.
I think one of the biggest examples of private-public partnership is Centennial Lakes District. The fee-based amenities there are the paddle boats and the putt-putt golf and skate rental and things like that. The offices and the condos and the apartment and the row houses pay a maintenance fee towards that. It helps offset the costs, and it has walking paths and it has sitting areas that are heavily used that aren't fee-based. It's interesting, because we have a lot of city planners that actually come into our city to walk around and look at that, because it's one of the first really mixed use of office and residential areas sitting around upon. The risks to it were that the developers that were going to build the housing and the offices weren't going to build what they said, because really, that maintenance fee is what helps that be successful. For instance, there is one area that was proposed to be 400 apartments, and it turned into 90 row houses. The row houses are lovely, but it doesn't pay the same fee that the 400 apartments would be. And originally, there was going to be a million and a half feet of office space that was culled down to 900,000, so a little bit less in maintenance fees, but it's been a very successful facility. We have a public partnership at 50th and France for our parking ramps. They're built on city land, but they were built by some taxes that were paid by the landowners there and some tax increment financing that was arranged by the city. All of the walkways and everything are done by the city, and they're maintained by the business owners, so it gives us a beautiful area for shopping, and it is definitely a perfect example of a public-private partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Bell.
The notion of public-private partnerships is certainly something that's very, very popular today. I actually just recently finished a program with the Humphrey Institute around policy fellowship, and one of the things that was discussed a lot was public-private partnerships and where they're going today. It's certainly here to stay in terms of how the cities will run themselves in the future, because it does give more latitude and agility, and it does help, from a standpoint of, you can help really shift some of the burden and challenges to the private sector. You can certainly maybe potentially move on top projects and things like that, and you can share in the planning. But there are risks as well. Specifically, you don't want to become an ATM for a business. You don't necessarily want to get in the business of picking and choosing winners and losers. In some cases, you can get out of your sphere of influence and potentially get yourself out negotiated, but overall, the partnerships themselves can be very, very beneficial. There's been several examples here tonight. One that I thought of, that we've talked about already, is the support that the city gave to Southdale in terms of the decisions that went along with that, because that was a huge piece of property in our town that really needed to be overhauled. Different example, but along the same line of a partnership. But I think today, cities need to compete to keep going forward with growth and really continue to be great. They need to be much more creative in how they do that, and this is an example of it. But along the way, it's important that we be transparent and open and understand that we're going to need to make tough decisions to make that happen. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the questions from the members of the audience. First question, what kind of development and redevelopment do you support for Edina? How can you guarantee quality construction and adherence to the adopted strategic plan, especially issues of density and height? Chad Bell.
So can you read back the first part of the question, please? It was a little long.
What kind of development and redevelopment do you support for Edina?
Okay, so from my perspective, this is kind of a wide-open question. I mean, I'm interested in helping the new citizens that want to move into our city, but also in ways for us to help our current citizens as they change the needs that they have. So in that case, you're looking at homes that may, and neighborhoods that may be going through a series of flux, which is where I live, on the east side of Edina, but also the need for us to provide different homeownership options or living options for our citizens as they progress in age, things like senior dwellings, things like that. As far as the type of construction, the type of design, obviously leaning on the plan we currently have is one thing, but that's something that is very, very difficult in terms of always getting to an answer. I think that's a very difficult thing to come across. It's not always going to be popular, but I think what we need to do, again, is be transparent, follow the plan we have, and be accountable to it.
Thank you. Mary Brindle.
Thank you. The redevelopment, in looking at even what the Metropolitan Council has in mind for Edina, is from a residential perspective, it's high density, it's in areas of transit, shopping, dining, recreation, and that really serves two segments, in my view, of the population. It's the young people who are in the market for a rental, and it is those of us who no longer want the maintenance of our property, but we want to stay in Edina, but we're not sure where we're going to end up or whether we want to buy. So there really are two segments of the population, those of us who want to go from two cars to one. With regard to commercial development, I look for some wonderful options here. There are some wonderful options happening right now, and that broadens our tax base and benefits us all.
Thank you. Wayne DeVorek.
Yes, I see we're doing a lot of building in the city right now, and I've talked to some people the other day, and they said they would like to see affordable, that they could live here permanently, move to Bloomington, because they're not in Edina right now, that would satisfy them to be able to buy something and live here. But we're putting a lot of houses right now that have a little regard, I think, for the people next door. They're building them so high and out of proportion on the lots we've got. I think we really have to tune down what's happening to our building right now, because a lot of people are disenchanted with what's happening to their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Swenson.
Sure. Well, the question has really two aspects to it. It has residential rebuilding and it has commercial rebuilding, and rebuilding or redevelopment really is the key word in Edina, because we're 98% built now, so we usually have to tear something down to build something new. As far as residential building goes, this council's worked really hard to help neighborhoods get affordable residential development that doesn't really hurt their neighborhood in the look, and that's by building heights, that's by building setbacks. We've changed them a number of times as we've worked with neighbors and helped them to make a better look. Currently, we don't have architectural review, and that would be that quality of construction. If you look at it architecturally, the state mandates what you're going to do for construction, so we don't. That's a state deal. As far as commercial redevelopment goes, it's happening slowly. It's not happened in the last four years very much, and I see stops, so.
Okay, thank you. Our next question, what is your vision for transportation in Edina for 2020 or 2030? We'll begin with Wayne DeVorek.
Well, I think down the line, you've been talking about the light rail coming through, but I think there's been some resistance of using the present rail here. If they can get a transit system through here, it'll undoubtedly help a lot. I think as far as the bus transit and stuff like that, they talked about Edina having a transit station there to help people get off and do different things there. I'm really not privy to a lot of things that are happening in Edina right now, given I'm presently on the board, but I think if I knew what they're proposing, I'd be better informed on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Brindle.
Thank you. I've had the good fortune of serving on the Southwest Light Rail Corridor Steering Committee and seeing where that light rail is going to come. It does not come into Edina, it comes very close to Edina, across the top, and then to the west of Edina, so we have several options. I think our responsibility is to look at ways to move our residents to those transit areas and the workers who arrive here on light rail from those transit areas into our city to their employment destinations. So that, I think, that's key, as well as the upgraded transit station at Southdale. I would look for, I hope, upgraded transit stations on the west side of the city where there really is, the transit is nonexistent there. So I look for some upgrades, and I think Southwest Corridor is going to be a nice shot in the arm to make us do it.
Okay, thanks. Chad Bell.
I think it has to be a mix in the future of really where the trends are going for our citizens. So we've talked a little bit about the light rail, but also things like making a city a little bit more bike-friendly, bus-friendly, even new services like CarShare and other things that are becoming more and more popular in urban markets. How can we help our citizens move about in more efficient and effective ways? It's not necessarily in the future going to be just about two cars, or three cars, or what have you. Citizens are going to want different solutions, and so you're seeing some of that today with some of the commercial development that's come about, becoming more bike-friendly, trying to do more with the bus routes, but fundamentally, the biggest difference is going to be, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all, a car community anymore in the future. It's going to be kind of a menu of sorts, and it might even be based on specific geographics in the city to make sure that we're giving the citizens what they want in that portion to move through with their lives.
Ann Swenson.
As a city, we work on transportation all the time, and that 494-169 interchange was one of them that we just recently worked on. So when we talk about cars, we talk about park-and-rides. We developed, established park-and-ride out of Southdale with part of our dealings with Southdale recently. We're talking about putting a park-and-ride potentially up in the Grandview area to help people get downtown and not have to always be on Highway 100. We have an issue with Crosstown 62 that we continue to work with MINDAT on, trying to continue the widening through, because it boundnecks through our community, and then people tend to get off the road, and they may go down your street when they do that. But Chad's right, we also are talking about walkability. We are establishing something called Living Streets. It means that we look at every street project and try to figure out what the best way to do is to get people around, whether it's by cars, whether it's walking, or whether it's biking. So yes, our residents are asking for different things, and we're looking for all of the solutions.
Okay, thank you. Our next question has to do with bikes. Bike lines have been a big hot topic in Edina. An example is West 70th Street between, I can't read this, Antrim and Metro Boulevard, was too dangerous because of the driveways during the Nine Mile Creek Bike Trail discussions. Last week, bike lanes were painted in that exact place. Okay. What place do bikes have in Edina? And we will begin with Chad Bell.
As far as addressing the question of what place do bikes have in Edina, I think it's fundamentally something that's really up to the citizens. I think what we want to do is provide the citizens that option if they want to take it, but it's not necessarily on our behalf to make you do it. It's more of a question of can we set up our facilities, in this case, our roads, to accommodate people who are looking for a different way to be mobile in society, which is what the bike lanes are, they're supposed to do. And that's fundamentally what we want to provide, is that opportunity for the citizens, but I don't believe it's our place to tell them they should or should not do that. But I do think it shows the right type of leadership thought when you're thinking of, we're not just thinking roads, we're not just thinking other things, we're thinking about bikes, because that's, in a lot of ways, what some folks want to see happen within the cities and as they choose communities to live in.
Thank you. Mary Brindle.
Thank you. Specifically, the route between Valley View and Metro Boulevard via Antrim Road and 70th Street, there's a school there, there are businesses there, and it hooks up to 70th Street going east. And as far as what place do bikes have in Edina? What place do bikes have in the state of Minnesota? The state of Minnesota statute 169 defines transportation vehicles, including bicycles, and it sets out that we share the road, and we have to provide that space for bicycles. In my view, the painted bike lane allows motorists to know where they belong and allows bicycles to see where they belong.
Thank you. Wayne DeVorek.
Yes, I believe the bike lane has been a hot topic in Edina right now. 70th is a little wider street, and it tends to handle the people a little better. On Wooddale, I think that we've got a little problem there with the people moving on bikes, and I know they were proposing to take away the sidewalk and let the bikers ride on the sidewalk, which I feel walkers should walk on, and bikers should be on the street, on their trails. But as far as the trail on Wooddale, it's kind of confusing, and I don't know if we'll ever get anybody to really know what to do. You can educate everybody in Edina on where they're going, and I think that we've got a problem with people coming from out of town or different places, because the trails are going to be really, going to be a problem for people. Thank you.
Okay. Ann Swenson.
If you were building a brand-new community now, you'd build it and set it up a lot differently, because you would probably put biking and walking trails separate. And if you go out to Eden Prairie, you'll see that they did that quite a bit. But we're living in a community that was built years ago, and it was built probably at a time where most families had only one car, and that isn't the case anymore. You look at the Edina High School lot, and everyone's driving and parking to school. So as we try to redo our neighborhood and help add sidewalks and bike trails, which has been asked for by our residents, our last resident questionnaire, trails was one of the most important questions for them. We need more trails, we need safer places to go. We're going to be retrofitting our city in some places with sidewalks, some places with trails, and it's something that we work together with our residents. It's not always a perfect plan, but we're going to continue to work hard at it, and we're going to try to keep everyone safe, not only if they're in a car, but if they're on a sidewalk or if they're on a bike.
Okay. Our next question, what do you think about organized garbage hauling for Edina? Ann Swenson.
Yeah, when I first started on council, we had a question about how many times a garbage hauler could pick up in one week, and we have that rule that you all notice that you put your trash out on the same day for your neighborhood. And I had 80 angry people in here, because they thought we were going to take away their garbage hauler. So it's a great idea, and I support the idea of trying to get to the point where we're going to have only one hauler drive down our roads every week, but it takes time. It's a state-mandated process. It takes about a year and a half. It takes a lot of resident input, because Maplewood just did this recently, and it was not an easy transition for them. So for us to go there, I think it's a good idea, but it needs to be a process with a lot of communication.
Thank you. Wayne DeVorek.
Yes, I totally agree with the problem we have here. I have 18 garbage trucks going down my street every Tuesday, and after we just bought new streets and paid for them, I'm not very happy and seeing them going up and down, but I was pressing this a couple of years ago. I've asked somebody in the city council if they could get going on this, if we could divide it into groupings where we'd have certain haulers in different areas, and like we did for the city, we got Morningside, we've got Rolling Hills or whatever else. But I think we've got to get the trucks off the street, because we've got more pollution and more damage to our streets than we should have. Thank you.
Mary Brindle.
Thank you. When I was in college at the university, I lived in Minneapolis, and I never thought anything about the fact that the whole city had one hauler. And I actually really never thought about it seriously until I got on city council. But as we've been watching the five companies come through every Wednesday in our neighborhood, I have been talking to some residents in our neighborhood, and most want the ability to contract with the contractor they like. And that is the culture of many of our residents. That's why that system exists in our city. It exists in neighboring cities, and that's why it exists there, is because I think residents kind of want it that way. Now, as a city, if we look at changing that, of taking away the choice, I think that is going to be, it's easy to say that it would be better in the long run, but it's going to be a very difficult thing to do.
Chad Bell.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mary on this, because sometimes the devil you know is better than the devil that you Sometimes the devil you know is better than the devil that you don't. You know, mine come on Mondays, and I'm out there on the bus stop with my kids and there's trucks all over the place. But I tend to agree with the fact that there's something to be said about having a level of competition so that the citizens can choose what they want. Now, you could make the claim that maybe five is too many, maybe there needs to be a better understanding of what is really a competitive marketplace. Is it five, or three, or two, or whatever? I would just be concerned about having it being one, because there will be changes to that. There'll be things that we don't know are going to happen that will occur, and it's not going to be that easy to change back. I would rather see us look at the current system we have and see if we can streamline it a little bit as opposed to going to a single provider.
Okay, thank you. Our next question. Do you support proposed city efforts to foster voluntary neighborhood associations? Why or why not? Mr. Devorek?
The city has been working on this for some time now, almost a year, I think, doing these associations. I guess Morningside has always had a designation as far as a neighborhood, but as far as, I live in Pamela Park, and we've all known Pamela Park, but I think if you put these associations together, are you going to have more bickering in these areas? Are you going to have somebody who wants to control it more? Somebody feel that they're more put down by the people in the area? I'd rather see it the way it's always been. I don't see any need that we have to have these associations or little neighborhood names. Thank you.
Ann Swenson?
I think the concept of neighborhood associations did come from the Morningside neighborhood. They've had an organized neighborhood association for a long time. The city's view of doing it is to get good communication to its residents. I think every resident still speaks to us individually, and a neighborhood association would never speak for the neighborhood as a whole. And I think that's one thing that's really important to remember. The neighborhoods don't have to form an official association, they can change the name of their neighborhood after it's been formed, they can change their boundaries. This isn't something that we're mandating on a neighborhood, it's something that we're allowing a neighborhood to do should it choose to, but it's a way to get better communication to our neighborhoods.
Chad Bell?
Personally, I wouldn't support the notion of the city forcing it on the citizens, which is, Ann's described, is not the intention at all, but that was part of the question, so I want to make that clear. I do believe that neighborhood associations are formed based on the neighborhoods as they exist today with the people who are there, and that's really the only way you're going to get a ground squall and make that happen. We have it in our neighborhood just based on the network of people that we've met, and it's through no other mechanism, and that's what we wanted to accomplish. It's not a full association, but it's how we communicate with each other, to keep each other informed of what's going on. I think that's the best way that you can make this happen. If the city can provide tools to make that easier for the citizens, that's fantastic, but I don't think it's necessarily needed. You know, we're not Minneapolis and we're not St. Paul, I don't think we should try to be them, I think we should be who we are and let our neighborhoods, you know, kind of make that happen on their own.
Mary Brindle?
Thanks. You know, I think we need to clarify something here, because we need to separate what's going on right now in the Neighborhood Naming Committee with what folks might be assuming is a move toward neighborhood associations. The Neighborhood Naming Committee is looking at the city as a whole and putting geographic names that make sense in different neighborhoods, simply for identification purposes. Now, there is not a move to say that we are promoting neighborhood associations, we're not saying they're necessary. I haven't heard anybody from the city tell anybody that we want associations formed in our neighborhoods. The process that's going on right now is to identify neighborhoods, where are the boundaries that make sense, and what are we going to call it? So when we say this neighborhood, that neighborhood, you can name it something, you can call it something.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Given the success of farmers' markets in the area, what next steps would you recommend to support access to healthy local foods, community gardens, and so forth? Mary Brindle?
Okay, that's got a lot in it. Patty, would you please read that again?
Given the success of farmers' markets in the area, what next steps would you recommend to support access to healthy local foods? And they give an example of community gardens and so forth.
Well, I'd underscore community gardens, frankly. The success of the farmers' market illustrates residents, and frankly, it's people who come here to work. It's not just residents who shop at the farmers' market. It's people who work in the Southdale area who walk over to Centennial Lakes, shop at the farmers' market and go away from there. But it's, as far as what are the next steps, I think it's access to bike trails so people can bike there, which is what is happening in that area. More and more people are getting to the farmers' market, not in a car, but on their bike and on their feet. And so I would underscore community gardens, I would underscore active transportation in that area to make it healthy.
Thank you. Chad Bell?
This is an incredibly poignant topic in my household, because my wife actually leads the effort at Concord to improve the lunch service, so we talk about this a lot. You know, fundamentally, from my standpoint, I've seen the community garden thing in action through our schools in terms of, you know, taking care of it and the kids getting involved in programs at that young age, which is really important. To the extent that the city can help, the schools do that, I think it's fantastic. In terms of, you know, other ways to facilitate and make things like farmers' markets become more popular, I think Mary answered the question. I think a lot of it is, it's not just about having the farmers' market, it's about having ways to get there, and it's more of an event than, you know, going to the store, it's more of an experience. Then we want to keep doing that. I think that as much as we can help entrepreneurs make that happen, that's what we want to do from the city's perspective. But again, I think a lot of this can start in the schools, and as much as we can help the schools do that, I think we'd want to make that happen.
Okay. Ann Swenson?
Yes, I love going out to Edinburgh and going to the farmers' market. Concord had a garden just down the street from me, and I watched the kids work in it. We're working on establishing a garden plot for residents in our city and a policy to do that. And even as a city within our buildings, Edinburgh Park or Indoor Park, where the kids have playground and birthday parties and everything, before we opened up a food-vending organization there for ourselves, we looked at what foods to feed children, what were healthy children foods, what could we offer? We asked the mothers what they would like. So as a city, we're really looking at what we could do to make our food healthier. We've now started offering food at Bremer Ice Arena with the same concept that we brought in at Edinburgh, you know, giving good, healthy choices to kids and not just junk food. So we're a due-town city, it's a very exciting thing, Bloomington, Ridgefield, and Edina.
Thank you. Wayne Devorek?
Well, I've been at the Edina Farmers Market, it seems very successful, they have a great variety. The thing I see is, even at 7500 York, they tend to have their own gardens over there. These older people are having their own gardens and planting them over there, seem to enjoy it. Well, now we've got Whole Foods in town, so people can go and have a more of an organic food if they want to have that, and I think other stores are starting to go with that. I guess I don't know where, excuse me, where they would have enough area to do, you know, gardens and stuff. I know they're promoting healthier food, like McDonald's and stuff like that, are getting healthier. So all in all, I think the farmers' market has been a very good thing for the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next question. City Hall solar panels are a great example of reliable, clean, decentralized energy. What additional programs and steps would you recommend toward greater energy independence, energy savings, and clean energy? Ann Swenson?
We started a new program, it's actually a federal program called PACE, where we help bond for a business who wants to put some energy-efficient piece into their building. The first one was the gas station on Cahill and 70th with solar panels. The second one is Salute Restaurant that is doing LED lighting and a new ventilation system. So as a city, we support doing that. Obviously, we just talked about what's on the roof of this building. We also are changing out all the lighting at Edinburgh to make it more energy-efficient. We're looking at our use through all of our city buildings, and we've been tracking them for a long time. We are what's called a green-step city, so we have goals that we work towards as a city for our public buildings all the time. So as a city, we are committed to helping the environment and being a good teaching tool for our residents also.
Mary Brindle?
Thank you. I would echo what Ann said. The PACE program, which as Edinans, we love to put our own brand on it, we have branded it the Edina Emerald Energy Program, and we do have these two commercial users, and right now it is limited to commercial, but these are two very good examples. And the way the program works is that they can make use of the city's ability to finance that project at the city's interest rate, often much lower than their interest rate, and we make that funding available to them, and they, it's the project is, I have in my notes, but the project is, the guarantee on payback, it's assessed as part of the, to the property, so even if they would have difficulty paying it back, we would be one of the first payees being paid afterward. Thanks.
Thank you. Wayne Devorek?
Yes, solar panels, I was in the building all my life, and we did solar panels for people that had the company, they put them on their houses, but it seemed like the payback was such a long time before you got your money back out of it. Now, if you could get a decent program that they would help you out to fund it, and low interest rates, you may see some payback, but I've never seen where solar panels really pay back your money that you invested. It's a great idea, and you can be using the sun as your source of energy, but unless it gets really cheap to do it, I, I've never seen that it worked out. Thank you.
Chad Bell?
I echo what Wayne had said earlier. I believe one of the issues here, and in terms of solar, is just, I get concerned about payback. I also get concerned about greenwashing, which is a term that we used to use at my old job, which is, there's such this push to make, go through energy efficiency and so many other places, it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily the right decision. So I would be a little more pragmatic in the sense of, what are some easy things we can do that actually do make some sense? LED light bulbs tend to pay out, they do make a lot of sense. It's a great way to save energy, there's a little bit of expense upfront, but it pays back a lot quicker, seems to work out. I would look at those type of things, as opposed, I'd stay a little, frankly, would stay away from solar, I don't think it's a good solution for our city specifically in terms of us getting involved financially, and I would focus on much more of those pragmatic, you know, kind of ease-of-use things to do.
Okay, thank you. Next question. There are areas of the city presently needing redevelopment. What is your vision for either Grand View or 44th and France or Valley View and Wooddale? Mr. Devorek?
Yes, Valley View and Wooddale, I live right by it, and we've got the little shopping center right there, and I would like to see that spoofed up a little bit, and we could have some, I don't know if TIF money would help them, I'd like to see some TIF money go to that, because that's a kind of a little center that everybody seems to like. And as far as the 44th Street, I know one time they were talking about redeveloping in that, and then they tabled that as far as putting Section 8 in there, and I guess all in all, I'd like to see that area, Valley View and Wooddale, develop more so that people would use it more readily. Thank you.
Ann Swenson?
Well, I live by Valley View and Wooddale too, and we do have some land there that the city owns, so we have the ability to be a catalyst for some changes there. But we are committed to doing small-area plans in the areas of 44th and France, Valley View and Wooddale, 50th and France, the Grand View Study we've done now, and then the Cahill Area, because we really want our residents involved with what they want to see in those areas. The Grand View Study has been completed, it's a framework is what I think our term for it is, and because we own the Public Works Building, or the old Public Works Building, and the school district has a bus garage, there's a lot of public land there that will eventually change over. So the question has been for two years, what does the public want to see down there? If you go on the website for Edina, you can see that framework in its entirety, and, you know, it's going to change eventually and slowly, and it's going to do it in a measured way, and I think we'll all be excited about it.
Chad Bell?
Of the ones that were listed in the question, the one that I guess piques my interest the most is 44th and France. I think it has a tremendous opportunity. The problem with it is you have Minneapolis you're dealing with for a part of that, and that's not easy. They have their own needs and wants, but I believe that that area itself always seemed to me, for, you know, as long as I've lived here, is something that's, it feels like it's a hidden jewel for our city, you know, whether you can replicate a 50th and France or bring them closer together, and it's difficult because you've got residential homes, but there's so much energy in that area, no pun intended, that I believe that there's, it feels like you could do so much more with it, whether it's mixed-use, whether it's light retail, or things like that. You know, the key is going to be finding the right partners, getting back to what we talked about earlier, who can also help strike up a vision of what it can be and help make that happen.
Mary Brindle?
Thank you. I think through the small-area planning process, which was done for the first time in the Grand View area, we learned a great deal about how you find out what the vision is. I mean, we can sit around a table and we can say, well, this would be nice and that would be nice, but the hundreds of people and the thousands of volunteer hours that went into that planning process, I think really taught us that we've got the talent and we've got the creativity in our community, and we've got the people who care about what they want that area to be. So no matter what area it is, we would shine a lens on it, and the people would come and tell us what they want in that area. Now, once that design framework is there, the developers look at it, they come in and they voice interest in it, and it becomes, in some cases, a public-private partnership. Both, and in maybe two out of these three areas, you have city property in there, and as it has been said, the city can be a catalyst in that.
Thank you. This is now our last question. What is your position on term limits for council members and for mayor? Mary Brindle?
Thank you. Oh, term limits. We instituted them in the boards and commissions because we've just got so many people who want to serve, and the only way really to move people through that, give people the opportunity, and really reap the benefit of all that creativity, is to have term limits. Now, I don't know if you need term limits up here. I'm not, I mean, we kind of, who knows? I mean, it's up to you. Your term limit is the voting booth. That's how, that's, you're the ultimate, you're the ultimate decider on what the term limits ought to be up here.
Thank you. Chad Bell?
My feeling, whether it's local or national, on term limits is generally the same, which is it's up to the voters to make that happen. You know, I think when you get in a situation where you have people who, if you feel someone's been there too long, I mean, it is incumbent upon citizens to get involved. You know, I know me personally, I'm running because I want to serve the city, others have other, other reasons for doing so, but fundamentally, term limits are a great answer, especially when you're really hacked off at somebody, but the reality is, to apply fairly, the best way to do this is to have the citizens themselves get involved, get mobilized, and make things happen, because it does happen. You can get people out if you don't want them in there anymore. And I think active citizenry is our best weapon in terms of in the future, making sure we can be an effective city that also has a bright future in front of it, is by having citizens that are involved in the process, whether it's electing folks like the city council or getting involved in commissions, I think that's very, very important.
Ann Swenson?
You know, it was the League of Women Voters that helped us see that we needed term limits for our boards and commissions, and even for the chairs of our boards and commissions, they now rotate. And it was the right thing to do there. I also agree with whoever else has already spoken, that you're my term limit, so if I don't do a good job, you're going to let me know that, painful as that may be, or as great as it may be if you reelect me, so you're my term limit.
Thank you. Wayne Devorek?
Yes, as far as term limits, I suppose you could limit it to two terms, and that way you could get more turnover, more fresh blood. Sometimes you tend not to get rid of the people you want to get rid of, because they tend to get ingrained into the city, and people just think that they're doing a good job. A lot of people probably don't know a lot about what's going on, so they keep voting for the same people. But you can vote them out and get rid of them, and that could be a term right there, but I think two terms wouldn't be bad for people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now hear the closing remarks from your city council candidates, and we will begin with Mr. Devorek.
Yes, I would like to be on the council because the fact, I think that the city, there's a lot of things I think we can move forward on, and I think there's things that we could cut and help people with the tax rates and get younger people into our city. I also feel that we could move forward on different things, like transportation, getting some housing for people that would like to stay in the city. I think they were talking about Pentagon Park, moving forward and having I think they were talking about Pentagon Park, moving forward and having some apartments there because I know people would like to stay in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bell.
I'm, I'm running for city council and hoping for your support because I, I love this city and I, I have a vested interest in the future of it and I want to be part of the leadership to make the future of this city happen. I have a background in, in business and building businesses and making things happen, taking risks and making things come to fruition. You know, for me personally, to, to be involved at this time with this city when there's so much going on, whether it's the change over our neighborhoods or opportunity commercial development, now is an important time for us. And it's, we're not willed to have a wonderful place to live, we have to work at it and earn it, and I want to be a part of that from a leadership perspective and I appreciate any support you could give. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brindle.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure to serve my first term as Edina City Council member and I look forward to another term if you grant that to me. Frankly, I've been asked, what happens if you're not reelected? And I said, there's plenty to do, there's a lot to do and I will hit the ground running. But nonetheless, being up here is, it's an honor and I thank you for that honor. I look forward to working on economic development, it fuels my excitement and creativity for where we're going. And I do honestly feel that, for example, just one example, the building at Seventieth and France, we went from a small business to now two businesses in an architecturally beautiful building. And that will continue to happen in that corridor, in other places in our community. There, Edina is a place people are willing to spend millions of dollars to be part of and we're very lucky.
Thank you. Ms. Swenson.
Working for our city has been an amazing experience and especially over the last four years when we had a difficult budget tightening time. We worked so hard to maintain our great services of plowing in the parks and everything else we provide and we waited to fill vacancies in our city hall and we asked our employees for unpaid leave. You know, it's, it's an important city to serve and we just have a new Twin Cities Orthopedics building along the crosstown, we're going to have a new medical building at the corner of 65th and France. Fairview-Southdale's having a redo and we're talking to the hospital about a new emergency room. We have a new Whole Foods as we've heard, but we also have a satellite for Mankato State, which is pretty exciting. So as our city prepares for the future, I really look forward to keeping our vision alive and I would ask for your support in November. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our forum for this evening. I would, would like to thank each of the candidates for, for participating and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for public office. It's a great commitment, so thank you for that. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters of Edina for sponsoring this forum. This forum has been taped for broadcast on Edina Community Channel 16 and will be shown on Tuesdays at 11 o'clock PM and Wednesdays at 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM through the election. The forum will also be available for viewing on the internet through the city of Edina at www.edinamn.gov. For more information on voting and the candidates, please visit the League of Women Voters of Minnesota election website at l w v m n dot org. Thank you for attending tonight's forum and please remember to vote on November 6th. Thank you and thanks once again to our candidates.